Finance Committee, March 21st, 2024.
We call the Finance Committee to order. Members present are James Mee, Christopher Maritz, Vicki DeShawn, and myself, Chair. We're going to call a meeting to order at 6:00 PM. We're going to do something kind of different if you have an agenda that will make sense to you. We're going to start with Finance only for the topic of the bed tax. And I have Casey Grau from the Bucyrus Area Chamber of Commerce here. When she's done, we're going to recess, but not adjourn. We're going to go through the other committees. And then after Economic Development, Finance Committee will reconvene, at which time we'll have public participation and go through the rest of the order. So at this time, I'd like to... Yeah?
I'm just bringing this up. I don't care how you do it, but I noticed when I was getting ready tonight that the report that Mrs. Grau gave to us that she'll be giving tonight, it covers not only the... It talks about the bed tax, but it also is covering the Tourism Bureau. The Tourism Bureau was never referred to Committee. When Mrs. Grau came back on Tuesday, February the 20th, and she spoke about the Chamber... Well, from the Chamber, and she gave an update on the Tourism Bureau, the bed tax, and DORA. At that time, a motion was made to place the bed tax into Finance, but nothing was ever done about the tourism. And the tourism, according to our standing committees, is in the Economic Development Committee.
It's my opinion, and I just conferred with the Law Director. She can speak, we just can't take any action on anything.
Great. I have no problem with that.
Yeah, so she can still give a report, we just can't take any action. If we feel the need to address anything that's not already in Committee, it would have to be referred at a later meeting.
So if we have any questions, are we allowed to ask?
Yeah, because we're not taking any action, is the way I see it.
Okay, got you.
Well, thanks for inviting me back and asking for some clarification following the report that I gave on February 20th. I'm just going to review the documents that I had forwarded to you all and allow you to ask questions. Per your request, I submitted the following information, an overview of financials from 2021, 2022, 2023. And in that report were expected encumbered expenses for 2024 as well. The reason I did that is I wanted you to be able to see what we had planned for those dollars in 2024. So you knew that we were acting on that financial information. You had also requested some minutes for prior meetings where we had reported to City Council. So I did give that information. I shouldn't say minutes, but any kind of reports that we had on when we reported out about how the bed tax dollars were being used. So I was able to obtain minutes from 2022, and that's part of your packet as well. Yep. So I thought it would be beneficial to first report out on just a timeline of what's been occurring from the Tourism Bureau to today. So in 2019, Max Miller resigned as the Tourism Bureau Director. At that time, Virginia Hammond Tree became the interim Director. 2020, as we all know, COVID broke out. And at that point in time, activity within the Bureau really came to a stall, as did everything else. 2021, the Tourism and Visitors Bureau, they disbanded. You'll see from the Financial Activity Report for 2021 and 2022 that there really wasn't a lot of financial activity there. And that was, I would say, because of COVID. There just wasn't a lot of activity occurring and not much need or requests for tours and the other activities that were recurring prior to that. 2022, the Chamber Director at that time, Jesse Ferner, requested that the Chamber oversee tourism in order to restart the work that had occurred in the past. Please note that bed tax dollars were actually being received by the Tourism Bureau prior to Jesse's request in 2022. So Jesse was simply here to allow the Chamber to oversee the funds because she was not only receiving calls for the Chamber as the Director, but doing a really good job of trying to field calls for tourism, which was in that same building as well. So then, 2022 and 2023, leadership changed within the Chamber. And at the end of the year, a Tourism Advisory Council was formed to try to continue those tourism activities. 2024, then, in January, members of the Tourism Advisory Council were solidified. And in February 2024, I became the new Director of the Chamber. And thus, I wasn't involved in things prior to 2024. So we're hopeful for your partnership. We really want to see tourism continue. We want the Chamber to be able to oversee those funds. We think that there's a really great relationship between the Chamber and tourism. It helps to drive our local businesses and the economic environment here in the area. So I want to pose it back to you for questions on the reports that I provided. Please.
First question. On 2024, where you show bed tax deposit of $24,663.27, there was also another bed tax check. And I checked with the Auditor's Office, and it was received March 8th for $14,000, and that's not on here?
Yeah, so I was hoping you would ask about that. So we did receive a check of $14,435.06. I did not put it on here because it hasn't hit our bank statement yet. There was a bit of a delay in me getting to deposit that because I had to get signing authority for the account. So it has been deposited. It is showing in our account. But I didn't want to put it on there because it wasn't in our bank account statements just yet.
And then one other question, or maybe a couple more questions. And this is just me being anal. Under 2023, bed tax deposit,
Yes.
you have $10,361.02.
Correct.
Now, in looking at the report given to me by our Auditor's Office,
Yes.
there is a difference, not a big difference, $25.
Yep.
So I'm assuming there was another deposit that was in that that was something other than bed tax?
It could be. When I calculated the dollars that Callie gave me, we were off by a few dollars. And I want to note, there's a difference in timing. So we might have received the payment, but didn't deposit until like a quarter later. So for example, if we received bed tax for the end of December 2023, we didn't deposit it until first quarter 2024. So I wanted to note that as well. The total amount of bed tax we've received is $90,794.17, and that should align with what we've provided plus that $14,435.06 that we recently received in the first quarter of 2024.
Now, your $90,000 figure, what was that again? And that's different than what you're showing here?
So that's off by that probably money that you were stating as well, by a few dollars. So it was a little bit different than what Callie had provided to me. But when I went back and looked at all of the deposits, plus that $14,435, that's what it equated to.
And then I notice here you do give money to the Bratwurst Festival?
Yes, so one of the encumbered expenses that we have for 2024 is to give money as a sponsorship to the Bratwurst Festival this year. We did get Board approval this morning for the Chamber Board to give $1,500 to the Bratwurst Festival.
Those are the only questions I had. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Maritz, did you have any questions for her?
No, not this time.
Mr. Mee?
Can I ask you a question?
Mr. Gerner?
So it's my understanding that it's in the works to be the Crawford County Chamber of Commerce.
Correct.
How does that affect the tourism aspect?
As of today, we don't have any plans to change the tourism to a countywide Tourism Bureau. So our first steps are to get to the merger of the chambers. But our goal is not to do anything different with the Bucyrus Tourism Bureau. And that's mainly due to the bed tax dollars that we receive. So that hasn't been discussed. When the question does come up, we say, hey, we're going to keep that as the Bucyrus Tourism Bureau as it stands today.
So you're keeping it as a separate entity?
They are separate entities today, and we'll keep that as of now. Now, that could change in discussions after the merger occurs. But as it stands today, our plan is to keep those entities separate.
So our current agreement, well, the current agreement that we had expired December 31st. And so one of the things you're seeking is a continuance of that.
Continuance, yep.
Committee, any thoughts on that? Mr. Mee, I'll start with you and come back this way.
I don't have any problem with it, as of now.
Mr. Maritz?
I don't have any problem right now, as of now, either, Sean.
No, I'm fine. We just... Have you been apprised of the Section 717.20, the Ohio Revice Code, that says that there's semi-annual reports that have to be made to us?
Yeah, I did see the... I watched the committee meeting where you reported to that. We are very happy to do that. And anything, if you want a more frequent cadence than that, we're happy to provide that as well. Yep.
That's the last meeting. I'd like to see that done quarterly.
Good, yeah, yeah.
It's also my opinion, I'd like to see a two-year agreement that's retroactive to January 1st that goes in line with this Council's term.
We have... Trying to say this in a nice way. Okay, we have the Bucyrus Tourism Bureau. If it becomes the Crawford County Tourism Bureau, what adjustments would the city like to make?
Yeah.
I say, my opinion, if that happens, then that agreement no longer exists.
Yeah, I agree with that as well.
No longer, so then we would have to come back to the table and revisit that.
So we might need a paragraph.
But as she stated, they don't have plans to do anything with the tourism yet. So even if the chambers, which are going to merge next year, merge together, then that new Chamber umbrella will still oversee the Bucyrus Tourism Bureau.
Correct. And we'll keep you apprised on any changes that occur and discussions on that. But as it stands today, the Bucyrus Tourism Bureau will be its own entity, only serving Bucyrus. So if that changes with the merger, we'll let you know. But as it, our plans are to change that right now, yeah.
But you were asking for a two-year contract.
That was my suggestion. She's not asking, but that's my suggestion.
Right, your suggestion, but what was your... There's no plans, so you don't even have a timeline, right?
Correct. Now, when Jesse Ferner came in 2022, it was agreed to that two-year timeframe. So that's where I think Kevin's referring to, that two-year. So every two years, this renews, and with the understanding that we come and report out as requested.
We did the same thing with the Economic Development. My reasoning for that is, if we're not here in two years, whomever is sitting here can make that decision rather than us making that for them.
But it would be no longer that they make changes like that? Or we could put something in for that?
Right.
Yeah, we could actually put into the...
I'm requesting that.
What's the difference if we just do one year, retroactive to January 1, and then next year, when we're still in our term, we do a one-year? I'm leaning towards the one-year.
My thinking is to allow them to budget ahead of time. And when we get down to November, December, for them not to know what they're going to be doing in January seems kind of wrong.
But when they're budgeting, I mean, they're budgeting with an unknown figure because we don't even know what the bed taxes are going to be.
Yeah, within reason. I mean, that's the same as us budgeting for our tax revenues.
Yeah, to get a look at trends.
We kind of know roughly where they're going to fall.
Yeah, I agree.
How about this year on it?
Yeah.
Whatever works best for all parties involved, really.
The Law Director, had you... Are you still doing that researching? So really, until that researching is completed, because we refer to that Ohio Revice Code section in the piece of legislation.
I just want to make sure because when you were reviewing it, there were several things that had changed historically. Make sure that there's nothing else that we need to make sure we know. But yeah, as far as putting language in there, a substantial change in the tourism makeup.
Yeah.
I mean, those would always allow it.
Or something similar to what we did with the Economic Development, where there's an opt-out clause
Right.
for either side.
Yeah. Yeah, and again, we'll keep you apprised of that. But I really don't see that being on our radar. We've got so much to accomplish with a merger with the Chamber right now that I think it's going to take some time for us to get to that point if we do.
Right.
And I guess, back to your thought, Kevin. It's not like... I mean, this is money that we're receiving from the hotels. It's not like it's coming out of, quote, "our" money, so to speak. It comes to us, and we deposit it.
We keep 50% of it, so yeah.
You keep 50% of the general fund.
It's not an expense to us, it's actually still income to us as well.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm fine if you want to do two years.
We'll wait to get to that when we get to the... When we reconvene, because I'd like to have public participation before we...
Well, but keeping in mind... Oh, excuse me.
You're fine.
We can't make a decision, though, because this is the tourism, and that's under Economic Development.
All right, fair enough.
Remember, we could only talk, but make no decision. So really, for us to say,
Yeah.
"two years," we can't make that decision.
Well enough, that doesn't pass well.
So is it in the open project on the Economic Development?
No, that's the thing. It's not.
We'll have to refer it and go through all the proper steps. But they're still able to go retroactively if that's the case.
Yeah, let me know if you need additional information in that process. So happy to help.
Well, I'd like to refer that. You can't do that, it's all Council.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it. All right.
All right, with that, we're going to recess at 6:16 PM.
Finance Committee, March 21st, 2024.
Service Committee is called to order at 6:20. Members attending, Eric... Aaron Scherrick. Go say your name backwards. Kevin Myers, Zion Hickman, Chris Maritz, Chair. I can open it for public participation at this time? Not seeing any. Moving to approve the minutes of March 7, 2024.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular Service Committee meeting, March 7, 2024.
Motion passed.
No, no. You have a first by...
Oh, first, okay.
First by Scherrick.
First by Scherrick, second...
Second by Hickman.
Second by Hickman, thank you.
All in favor?
All in favor? All right. There we go.
Good job. Now, motion passed.
Open projects.
Motion passed.
Motion passed, thank you. Open projects.
Got a question on open projects. With... Questions to Mr. Gerner. With the deposits and stuff for the utilities, is that something... But we can discuss that as part of open projects here?
If it's an open project.
Yeah. Actually, I was going to bring you a piece of paper that had some information, and I don't have it with me, so I'll save it for the next meeting. So I'll ask Mr. Maritz if you can have that put on the agenda. Yes. The deposits.
One of the questions I had in the open projects was EV charging stations. Are we going to do anything anymore with that? It was up for discussion back in '22, and hasn't been talked about since, I don't think? As far as getting more stations or going to...
You could... I think that you could safely take that off of your open projects. And if there's any interest in doing that again. I think that began because we got a letter from a solar company or AEP or somebody inquiring as to charging stations throughout the city. And so we put it in committee, and then that kind of fell by the wayside. But I don't know unless the mayor knows. I haven't heard anything about anybody trying to do anything to that effect lately.
I have a question, though.
I have an answer.
I mean, I know that they were going to look into it further, and then we really didn't get any more information about it, and it just kind of got dropped. But I know one of the things was not having places to put them. But if we were to say have some parking lots that we didn't know what to do with and might not get any money for, would that not be good places to put them? Because then, you know, it'd be kind of an income thing for the city because you get a percentage of them.
Yeah, but they are not cheap. When we worked with the partnership to install the one at the square, that was like $90,000 to install that.
That was our cost?
No, no. We just allowed... We allowed them to put it on our... The partnership actually had a grant for that, and they're the ones that get the monthly payment from the... You know, if you plug your car in and you have to pay for it, they get the money for that.
Just a thought.
I think also the... Back in 2022, stormwater ordinance. Look like if we take that off, because it passed back in April, unless there's a different one out there now?
No, we did that, yeah.
And went for Nevada water line.
It's got water going through it.
Finished, though. We'll take that one off. Well, it didn't have a date on here.
I hope there's water. But yeah, that was finished.
Let's try to find other things we can take off of this list here. Airport runway lights, we can take that off as a resolution because it's been passed as a resolution. Take that off as well, okay?
Right.
I went to a meeting Wednesday for Crawford County Solid Waste to discuss some of the... We discussed at our last council meeting. There's going to be another meeting on the 27th next week at 3:00 at the Engineer's Office, the courthouse. So if anybody in the public wants to attend that, that's open for anybody to go to who wants to find out more about it.
Is it at the Engineer's Office or the courthouse?
Engineer's Office.
It's out by the...
It's out at the fairgrounds.
At the fairgrounds, what time is that?
At 3:00. Thank you for reminding me. 3:00.
Everything's at 3:00.
Bless your heart.
Yeah, exactly.
That's all I have for open projects that I wanted to discuss. Anybody else have anything of projects they want to bring up?
No, sir.
Okay. Public participation again? Going to adjourn at?
6:25.
6:25.
Health and Safety Committee, March 21st, 2024.
I call the Health and Safety Committee meeting to order at 6:27 PM. Members present are Kevin Myers, C. Aaron Scherrick, James Mee, and myself, Vicki DeShawn, Chair. First, we have public participation. That would be you.
That's me.
Yes.
I'm not quite sure. I've never done anything like this, so I did not prepare a thing. Did you just want me to sort of go over the TNR program and where I'm at now?
Well, we kind of all heard that on Tuesday. If I could... What I'd like to hear from you is, I know you said that you'd like us to look at Chapter 505 of our code. Maybe explain what it is you're looking for us to change and why. You also mentioned maybe creating a new ordinance. What your goal is, what you want the outcome to be from that, those kind of things.
Well, when I looked at the animal control, the 505.1, the first thing that baffled me is it said that we have an animal warden that was sworn in by the mayor. And I called the mayor's office, and...
Did you swear you in when you called?
No. Didn't. And found out that she didn't know who it is. So I was kind of curious as to who it is.
We do not currently have one.
Okay.
I think that most of our animal... We have a contract with the Humane Society to handle our boarding lost animals and that type of stuff.
The county dog warden helps out?
They do.
The Crawford County Dog Warden, yeah. Okay, so I... Since I'm sort of new at this, but I'm kind of a stickler when it comes to ordinances and things. And I would like to see that revised, definitely. It doesn't look like... It looks like it was passed in '73 and has not ever been touched since then.
Nothing's been changed in '73.
Okay. So I would really like to see that revised to bring it up to date that we don't have an animal warden. Because anybody that is going to look at that is going to wonder who the animal warden is. And of course, then, it does go on to talk about the animal warden. And, you know, they would sort of like be responsible for the stray cats, nuisance of cats, because I'm the dog warden. And it doesn't have anything in there really about that. I gave everybody a copy of an ordinance from Baltimore, Maryland. It was the only one I could find. And that specifically has laws in there about feral and stray cats. And I'd appreciate it if you would look that over. And then, let's see if we can't get this kind of up to date, I guess is what I'm asking. Because it does sort of bother me that it says we have an animal warden. And here, I find out we probably haven't had one in a long time, I guess.
So what is your overall goal? You say you'd like to look at the Baltimore legislation, and you want us to consider something. What is it you would like us to be able to do that we're not currently doing?
I would like to see if you would be willing to revise this 505.1.
Absolutely, but then I think you're going a couple steps further than that. What is it that you want us to be able to do as far as with, you know, having legislation about these cats?
Well, I don't... I'm not to the point yet where I think that you should implement into an ordinance the TNR program. But, I mean, I didn't really... The Baltimore one does not have that. I guess just more or less to have in there about the feral and stray cats, what they are. I mean, the Baltimore ordinance was pretty plain, you know, pretty right there, explaining to people what it is. And, you know, I'm going to be doing that, of course, but...
I mean, I guess from my point, I applaud you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
I want to make sure that I come across and say that. But I don't know how much involvement we can have. We talked about this a couple months ago, like we shared with you on Tuesday. And we don't have the staff or the funding to create staff to do any additional work with it.
And I've... I got to be honest with you. The reason I came here was more or less for your support.
Yeah.
For getting the word out that this program is starting, that I'm the one that's the coordinator. And I do want to apologize because on Monday, I said something about city property and needing your approval, and you brought it to my attention. No, we don't... You would be on... And I would be on private property. You are absolutely right about that. I do not see me trapping on any public. But if I had to...
If the park or something, or a lot that the city owned, had a problem, by all means, and we can give you that kind of permission.
Okay.
But not, you know, I can't let you go to Mr. Stoker's house and do that. Mr. Stoker has to let you do that.
Exactly. Yeah, so...
You don't have cats around your house, I do, Bill.
But basically, I was not asking for any funding or anything. I just really want you guys to be able to be aware of this program, to say, back this program up because it is highly needed. I just did my figures today before I came here, and we are now up to 991 stray cats. I mean, I'm getting the reports every day from people, and it's just such a need. Now, one of the things I was going to tell you that I hadn't told you yet is that I am meeting with the Community Foundation on the 27th. And we... After that is all secured, I will be asking for donations from the community and sponsorships, probably from businesses. I am also, at that time, meeting with another group that is called Four Leaf Rovers. They're out of Galleon. And they actually... They've actually done some spay and neuters for cats. And they are getting a mobile unit up and running in about three weeks. So I think that we're going to have the spay and neuter part covered. And except for, I will need donations from the community.
I feel safe to say that you have my support. I think it's great what you're doing.
Thank you. Well, it is needed. I mean, myself personally, I've trapped... On Kaler Avenue, I've trapped over 10 cats and kittens. And it was needed. It's needed.
They're cute till there's 100 of them, right?
Yeah. You know, when I found out the figures of female cats being able to have kittens at four to six months, I thought, there is one other thing. Maybe when you're looking at this ordinance, there are people that... this ordinance, there are people that their animals are, they say they're indoor-outdoor cats. I had a woman get ahold of me on Facebook the other day and said, my male cat is not neutered and he goes out every night, but he stays in during the day. Now, I was under the impression that animals were not allowed to run at large, and that does, that's not just dogs, it's cats, it was in here, you know? But I do know that that's never enforced. Also abandonment, I've heard lots of people say, oh, these people were living in this apartment and they had a bunch of cats, and when they moved, they just left them. That's abandonment, that's a misdemeanor. And, you know, I just think that these laws should be enforced, I really do. So I wrote her back and I told her that I believed all cats should be spayed or neutered. And I suggested that she spay, that she neuter him because I said, your cat is going out and mating the stray females and adding to our population. So I don't know what to do about those types of problems yet. You know, how, can you make somebody spay and neuter, and if they're not spayed and neutered, is there any way that they have to keep in their house? I mean, I have two females, they're both spayed, and, I mean, they stay in my house. They don't go outside. And so I don't know, you know, of course, being now in this program, I'm probably, I'm going to have some issues with some things that, you know, I feel they should be enforced, you know?
Thank you.
You know? So do I stay for the, I'm on here too for public lands and buildings and?
No. You're, yes.
You're welcome to, you're not, you know.
Okay.
Only if you want to ask that committee if you can go on the parks or public property and trap, but.
Oh, is, do I stay for, ask them for that? No, you guys already gave me.
You're doing it anyway.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I probably won't be.
I'll worry about it until it's enacted.
Is there any, any other questions that you have? Anything?
Don't forget about the nonprofit organizations that's around town.
What's that?
The Cleveland Brownsbackers, they could give you a donation.
Really?
Yeah.
See, I haven't even looked into any of them yet.
I think there are moose and elks, and that's something you could look into.
When I, when I was doing the Neighborhood Watch, I went and spoke to all those groups, you know, just specifically for the Neighborhood Watch. But this is a lot different. I didn't need donations then. So this is a new thing for me. So the reason I got ahold of the Community Foundation is because I personally do not want responsibility for any money that comes in on this program. So the Community Foundation is going to handle that for me. And they said that any invoices I would have or anything, then they would pay it out of the money that they get from donations for us.
Quite a great idea.
Yeah, so.
One last heading.
I'm getting there. It's been very, it seems slow to me, but I'm anxious to get out there and capture these cats, you know?
Thank you.
You're all going to pay very much.
Okay, next we have approval of minutes. That would be the March seventh, twenty twenty-four regular Health and Safety Committee meeting minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the March seventh, twenty twenty-four Health and Safety Committee meeting minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Mee. All those in favor? Next is our tenant roster. SARS-codified ordinance one eighty-nine point two-two penalty fee. I put that on the agenda, but I don't think we're.
I'm not seeing anything.
Kevin asked me some questions.
Oh, excuse me.
You're fine. Kevin asked me some questions the last time, and I got some answers from the Income Tax Department regarding it.
Okay, great.
So the first question was, how do they create, how do they know who should get a tenant roster? And the Income Tax Department reported that honesty from landlords when filing their taxes, as well as they can check utility bills from renters when they're getting their services turned on, and they can check that property and they ask who the landlord is. Once income tax is aware, then they mark their accounts with an R, and then when they go to populate the tenant rosters in October, November, the software just populates it all for them. And then I was asked, is there any way we can make it more fair so that multi-generational households would have to still comply or do something similar to a tenant roster? No, mostly because we're talking multiple properties versus one property. I believe Mr. Long had asked how we can make it more fair when we're talking about large property management companies versus smaller landlords. And when I was discussing with income tax, they had said possibly charging per property of, like a fine per property, like fifty dollars a property. And that way, if they're a huge, you know, huge landlord, then they, the fee would better reflect the amount of properties they own. That's about it.
Would you want to go per unit?
Right.
Okay. Jim, you want to go first?
Would you want to go per unit instead of per property?
Yeah, I think that's what she was getting at.
Okay.
But.
Kevin?
You made the mention, and I didn't write it down, but you said something about they'll, if somebody has multiple properties, so you can't go on a private, like, you can't ask Erin to turn one in to say that she's got an adult child living with her because it's a single property. So if a landlord owns just one single property, you're not going to go after them. That's, this is where I'm saying that's not fair.
Yeah.
You know, I don't believe that, you know, unless we can come up with a way that's fair, I don't think we should be doing anything with this.
The Tax Department does a pretty good job of narrowing down the multi-generational homes, though. I mean, like, mine is definitely a multi-generational home.
Right, but to what she just said, if you own a rental property and that's the only one you own, they're not going to ask you to fill one out, but if Jim owns four houses, they're going to ask him to do it. We've got to make it fair. If we're going to do it, I have no problem with doing it, but it's got to be fair for everybody. We don't have people who'll come in and say that they're, they're being treated differently than others, and we're not doing something right.
Could there just be a questionnaire in every water bill one month?
And then that falls back on the honesty. If you choose not to fill it out.
But, I mean, at that point, everybody's been given that.
Yeah, I don't know what, I don't know if there is a right answer, but it's, you know, Mr. Long did make that point that it wasn't being done fairly.
I think it was just that there's an ordinance where it should be being completed already and it's just not being followed. So it was just what can we do to motivate landlords to follow the ordinance?
We have an ordinance in our codified ordinance.
It is one eighty-nine point twenty-two.
Excuse me?
One eighty-nine point twenty-two.
That's what brought this topic up?
Oh, well, yes, good lord, it's right there. So what are we going to do?
I want to hear some more suggestions on how it can be done fairly so that we don't have some property owner saying that they feel that they are being singled out or treated unfairly. If we can come up with a plan to make sure that we're addressing all of this, then that's great. Like I said, I know why we're doing it. It makes perfect sense. We want to make sure we're capturing all of the people that should be filing their taxes with us. But again, I guess I'll go back to, it's your responsibility to file your taxes because you live in your house that you own. Why is that any different? You know, if I'm renting a house from you, it should be my responsibility to file my taxes in a house I'm renting. It shouldn't be your responsibility to say, well, this guy's living here.
Although it sounds like devil's advocate, don't forget a lot of the people who rent are also the ones that don't pay utilities and don't pay, even though they're supposed to. So those are the ones that they're trying to catch, are the ones who don't file taxes the same way they didn't pay three months of electrics and three months of gas until they were, you know, evicted.
It makes sense. I understand why we're doing this. It makes total sense, but you can't apply it fairly, then we shouldn't be applying it. Come up with a plan is what we need to do.
So we'll table it and everybody will come up with a plan? Or Brian, do you want to come up with a plan?
I think that sounds like a great idea.
Yes, ma'am.
You're right.
All my spare time. I mean, there are some things that, yes, we can look around and try to pull from current existing other counties as well, or cities, as well as talk with the Tax Department. I don't know how much of the, you know, I mean, the United States does their census every ten years, and they tell me, is it a crime not to send my census back in? So I do it.
Yeah.
I don't know.
It's already a crime not to file your taxes, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
As of today. Right.
So if you're not going to pay your taxes and you're living in my house, if I report that you're living there, is that going to make you pay your taxes all of a sudden? I guess I'm just seeing it's kind of, we're doubling up on something that.
Well, it gives the Tax Department the ability to know, A, somebody is living there.
Yeah.
Way to chase them down.
I get it, I get it.
But if you move four of your buddies into your houses, people are just going to come and share your house with you. You don't have a responsibility in that instance.
Right. Technically.
As a landlord, but they're not going to mail you a form.
Right. Yeah, hey, I'll think about it and talk to the Tax Department and look at some other cities, ways in which they collect information. It's never going to be a hundred percent perfect either way. We'll either miss some or we'll overburden the others, I guess.
Okay.
And then, oh, not to cut you off, but, and then you get like Ms., I think Lewis, right? This is the cat lady lady. I forget her last name. Lewis?
Darla, Darla something.
Darla, Ms. Darla. Anyways, like she says, then not only do you have ordinances on the book that says if my cat crosses over into my neighbor's property, it is illegal. It is in fact a minor misdemeanor and I could prosecute you, but I don't know the last time I've seen a ticket because your cat ran through the neighbor's backyard. So even if we put this penalty provision, and even if we file this, and even if we go to court, then you also have to get a judge to say, man, we should do something about this. And it's crap shoot.
Seems senseless to pass legislation that we don't plan to enforce.
Well, we used to.
Right, but we're being asked to look at this right now.
We used to enforce it all.
So do we want to move on?
Yes, please.
Open projects. I went through the open project list, and I have a few here that I think should come off. Our ambulance contract, that resolution was passed on February the twentieth of this year. The Bratwurst Festival street closures, we had our third reading. That was done on March the eighteenth. Now, I know, Erin, I heard you talking earlier about you felt that we should keep those type of issues or what have you on the open project. You didn't want them removed since they're a reoccurring.
And we had asked the question about whether or not we should just go ahead and do like a permanent ordinance thing that then the mayor can sign off on so that it's all set up.
Okay.
For these things that are definite every year. And I was looking, you know, you got, you got the Santa Parade with, with Kind of Like Christmas, you've got the Bratwurst Festival, you've got the bike show, you've got the car show, like, that would be less out of the budget to have to do legislation on every single time.
Yeah.
If we were to just do something and then, you know, in it say, you know, the mayor signs off, or we relook at this every five years, or, you know, do a permanent thing and if there's a change, we can, with a thirty-day notice, look into, you know, prior to when it would have been, it would have had to have been published.
If you want to close the street in front of your house instead of trash dumpster there for the week, they have the authority already to sign off on that. We don't come in here for that. I guess to me, there's no difference. If you want to close down Sandusky Avenue to have a bike show for a day, let them just have the authority to say, yes, we'll approve that. They still, the parade permit gets signed by the Service Director, the Police Chief, and the Fire Chief. So all the important people already know about it. They all have agreed to it. You know, why does it need to come into here for us to agree to it?
For legislation every time.
And then pass legislation and publish legislation.
And if we were to do this right, though, like the Bratwurst Festival, that's a set weekend. The car show's been a set week, like, they've been really good about doing these so we could even put, you know, the third weekend of June, the third weekend of, whatever they are, for these specifics so that it's already in print and what streets and whatever are being closed, and if there's any changes to that, then they could add that, you know? But it'd be kind of nice just to have one less thing that we're worried about that we shouldn't have to spend money on every single time. Because they, I mean, they really do do all the legwork for it anyway.
I'm taking a step further there, and I think it's, you know, to me, it's an administrative function. Let the administration be administrative and let them have that authority, which they should have, you know? If they want to issue a permit to shut down a street for X number of hours or something, who are we to have to have a say in that? That's.
It would be nice to have advance notice for things that are planned in advance, though.
Well, that's something they can do. You know, we can ask that they let us know those types of things. I get all that, but.
Yeah.
So is that something that we'll do later? I mean, we're not going to.
We don't have to do anything on it right now. My thought on it was, though, like, we have, we just did the third reading of the festival, and we did the first readings of the bike show and the car show, and I think all three of those are wasteful publications. I know you said you whittled down the wording and the caption, but still, there are things that we know we're doing every year and they just, I don't think we have to. I think you just sign a parade permit and be done with it.
Okay. On here, resolution two eighteen, twenty twenty-one, I'd referred that to the wrong committee, so we need to take that off. Same thing with the Bratwurst Festival agreement, that needs to be taken off this committee. It's in finance. And that's all I had that I felt needed to be removed right now, that's been taken care of.
I don't disagree with any of us.
And we took off the stop sign on Pearl Street, right?
No, we didn't.
Because that, we don't have really a say for the trial thing. It's if they come back to us and it's something.
The Traffic Commission does that and then brings it to us that they want to make it permanent.
Right, then we'll have legislation because we have to amend the traffic control map.
As this was, this is just the trial, so it was, it's not even referred right if we wanted it on here.
Correct.
So remove it, okey-dokey.
Sorry.
No, that's fine.
They'll refer it to us with a letter from the Traffic Commission.
Anybody else have any? Okay. Public participation.
I was glad there was, Ken Long, sixty-two five South Spring Street. I was glad there was discussion tonight about this tenant roster, and I'm especially glad that, I think that Mr. Myers brought up, you know, this ordinance from twenty years ago or whatever. I'm not sure who mentioned that. My comment on that, just because somebody did something twenty years ago in this room doesn't mean it was right then. And so if, while you've got the rest of this all stirred up, that should be stirred up also because that roster was, wasn't fair then. It's definitely not fair now. I think you guys see all the problems that you're having with it not being, this whole thing's not, I don't know if there's a quick way to fix it, okay? But I do know that this ordinance out there hanging already, that's, you know, you can have your birthday taken away or whatever, that's not productive either. So just put that, put that out there because while you're spending time trying to fix all this, that definitely needs undone and redone also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg White, eleven twenty-five Hill Crest Road. I have to agree with Mr. Long about the tenant roster. I also think that this committee should also open it up to the public that if. that if anybody has any suggestions or comments towards that, that they can be entered into the record for ideas or anything on how to maybe help you guys out a little bit. Second of all, I agree with about the street closure thing. I think that should be a very simple process, okay? That the administration, this council needs to put into an ordinance allowing the safety service director to issue any permits for any street closures. I think there should be, as I agree, there should be a clause in there that if you want to change it later, there should be a clause that the council can change that at any time, okay? And that there should be, unless it's an emergency or something like that, because you guys also forgot about nights out, you know, in August, that a simple permit for a street closure should be done at least 30 days in advance of the street closure. That way, this council would know, the city would know when, when that street is going to be closed and what needs to take place with the state, the police department, the fire department, and everybody like that. At least they will have advanced notice why the street is being closed or streets being closed so that they can properly prepare to do what they need to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
And to your point, I know at least several years ago, if it was any state route, if it was longer than 24 hours, we had to construct signage. And ODOT used to do that. Now we have to do that. I don't think that's changed. I think it's a 24 hours is that time limit. So the car show, for instance, we don't need to, we do put up, you know, detour signs, but we're not required to. Anything over 24 hours, I think we are, but yeah, that all needs spelled out of who, you know, so that somebody six years from now looks at that and says, oh, it's my job to do this and this and this.
Karen, but wasn't there something that we do to alert ODOT and whatnot for semis and...
Yes, we put that in there for the Bratwurst Festival because a couple of years in a row, we had wide loads that nobody... The mayor's office thought the police department did it. The police department thought the mayor's office did it. Nobody did it. And these truckers are sitting there and if they deviate from that path, they get like million dollar fines. And he's like, I'm not going anywhere else. I'm going that way. And we're like, okay, 11:00 PM.
See you Sunday.
And so we put that in there mainly so that everybody knew it's somebody's job to get something done.
I say, but that, that, they had to have...
It's a 30-day advance notice unless it's an emergency and, and let the service safety director decide what needs to be an emergency to close down a street or whatever, but at least, at least 30 days out so that every other agency, including the city crews, know when they got to take stuff to barricade off streets for whatever. Because it was mentioned before, yes, most of these dates are all planned out ahead of time. So they know.
But a trucker from New York doesn't know that.
But they don't know that. And so that's why, you know, the parking on certain streets should be no parking like they usually are and stuff like that so that these wide loads can get down Spring Street or whatever they got to go and stuff like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
They had said, the last group had said that they had to put that advance notice out 30 days to ODOT. So we would have to say it before that 30-day period because they have to give them time to put it into like the GPSs and whatnot for, because they, they do a lot of work to reroute people.
Does anybody have anything else they want to talk about?
Can, with that topic, can we request some sample legislation for our next meeting, Mr. Gerner?
Yes.
And then we can go from there? That would give us a chance to look at it and see if there's anything we feel we missed or...
And this is for combining...
For all street closures, granting the authority to the administration to, through the use of their parade permits or they, they can call it something other because parade permit seems kind of confusing when it's a street closure. But a street closure permit
Yeah, I get it.
With all the stuff we just talked about.
Yep.
And all the headache that goes with it.
Okay, if nothing else, we will adjourn the health and safety meeting at 6:59 PM.
Public lands and buildings committee, March 21st, 2024.
I'm going to call the public lands and buildings to order at 7:01 PM. Members present are Zion Hickman, Carolyn Shireman, Christopher Moritz, and Ciaran Sherrick, Chair. First order of business is the public participation. Do we have public participation for public lands and buildings? Seeing none. Next on the list is the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion for the approval of minutes from the March 7th? 2024 regular public lands and buildings committee meeting.
I make a motion.
I have a motion from Mr. Moritz.
A second.
A second from Mr. Hickman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. The next order was the trap neuter return program, which we heard about in a previous health and safety meeting. So did anybody have anything that they needed to add to that or... Okay. So is there anything on open projects that you feel we need to talk about this evening?
I don't have anything right now.
Couldn't find nothing.
Okay, so back to public participation. Do we have any other public participation for public lands? Seeing none, I'm going to end at 7:03 PM. Okay, so we are not adjourning yet. Mr. Long?
Ken Long, 625 South Spring Street. Just want to see if there's any update on the pool. There's supposed to be donation money. It should be whatever happening and I'm, I'm pretty simple. I just want to see if it's open or not.
Mr. Trucco, Mr. Starnard, do either of you have an answer to that or still nothing?
Tomorrow, we're going to have a meeting with...
Okay, so there's a meeting tomorrow, so nothing yet. Okay, awesome. There's your answer.
Thank you.
All right. Any other public participation? Okay, seeing none, we're ending at 7:04, adjourning at 7:04 PM.
Plating committee, March 21st, 2024.
Plating committee, 7:05. Aaron Sherrick, Carolyn Shireman, Vicki DeShawn, and James Mead, Chair. Public participation. Anybody? Bill? No. Okay. Approval of the minutes for March 7th, 2024, regular plating meeting.
Mr. Me, I will make a motion to approve the minutes for March 20, March 7th, 2024, regular plating committee meeting.
Thank you, Erin.
Second.
Thank you, Carolyn.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. BCO 1189.03. That has to do with the asphalt and the concrete, changing the general requirements ordinance, Mr. Gerner. Still working on that? Okay. Zoning for solar panels.
So as far as zoning for solar panels, uh, next committee meeting, I will bring a rough draft based upon what you've provided out of some different ones. And that way, you guys have something in front of you that we can start to pick apart and keep what we like and get rid of the rest.
Okay.
I think that's probably the easiest way to do it.
Anybody, any more comments? Erin likes it.
I'll try to get it to you early, like maybe this week or next week so that you have time. So you don't have to stay up all night before the committee meeting.
Next on the list is business home occupancy zoning.
That is being referred to planning commission. And you had spoken to Landon.
Yes.
Who's like the czar of planning commission right now. And so I'll talk to him, get him the paperwork, and then we can schedule a planning commission meeting.
And I also talked to Landon yesterday and he's coming to our next committee meeting to speak on the subject.
And I think he had some other things he wanted to, while we're opening up the zoning code to discuss.
And yeah, that's what I told him. I said, now would be a good time just to...
Have one public hearing for the whole thing.
Let it all out.
Bring your lunch bag.
Yeah, I know. Okay, open projects.
Vacation of Jackson Street.
That should come on.
Mm-hmm. And then the water line changes. That was where, you know, Mr. Wyatt came and just gave us information of...
That was an informative...
Right, exactly.
Yes.
And then I suppose same thing with the 90-day stop sign trial. Erin, take that off too?
Yep.
Works for me.
That should be it for now.
So much for open projects. Public participation. Mr. Stuckert.
Bill Stuckert, 205 North Spring Street. Concerning the business home occupancy zoning. I think, I don't know if this was mentioned before, but currently the home, the business home occupancy is a conditional use granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals. I did mention in conversation with Mr. Me that I do, do know of some that we did grant here in the past recent, most recently that I remember was in July of 2023. I can remember a couple other instances, but I did bring some of my paperwork from that last request. And I just want to read real quick the codified ordinance, Section 1187.03, home occupations. Home occupations shall be considered as an accessory or conditional uses as specified in the respective zoning districts of this ordinance. In addition, all home occupations shall comply with the following standards. Use shall be clearly incidental and secondary to residential use of the dwelling and not more than 25% of dwelling unit floor area is devoted to the home occupation. The home occupation shall not generate greater vehicular traffic volume than is normal for a residential neighborhood. C, not more than one person other than immediate family residing at the premises shall be employed in such occupation. D, external indication of such home occupation shall be limited to one non-illuminated sign, not more than six square foot in area. E, no equipment or process shall be used in the home occupation which creates noise, vibration, glare, fumes, odors, or electrical interference detectable, excuse me, to not, to normal senses off the lot. F, no home occupation shall involve the exterior storage of equipment or inventory. Generally, home occupation shall be regulated not by specific activity performed, but rather by presence of external impacts that may affect the residential character of the surrounding area. In particular, a home occupation shall consist primarily of rendering specific personal services. Examples would include a salesperson, member of the clergy, lawyer, engineer, architect, real estate consultant, accountant, artist, computer or telecommu, excuse me, telecommunications worker, or private teacher. Home occupation shall be performed by the occupant of the premises. So as it is now, we can grant the home occupation, business home occupation.
This is for, yeah, this is for accessory structure.
It's just an accessory structure, not the main structure.
Oh, that's what the, the business home occupancy zoning pertains to, is an accessory structure.
But you're, is, if you're like operating your business out of your actual structure code, what she was kind of talking about was adding separate structures to operate a business out of, which falls under a little bit of a different...
It falls under 1147.02.
But it would be, what we're recommending would be the same fix, right? Give you the authority Yes. under the Board of Zoning Appeals to look at those criteria for accessory structures that somebody, because you don't want somebody to open up a mechanic shop in their back garage.
Right.
But other types of businesses may be less cumbersome to the, impactful to the...
And in this one particular instance that, that I have these notes from, this person did request to create and sell crafts out of a separate building, a shed on the premises, which we granted. Now, my interpretation of this, it doesn't really say specifically that the business has to be conducted out of the living quarters area of, of the premises. So in my interpretation of it, they should be allowed to use a, a separate structure that is on their premises because it is part of their residential property. Okay, so...
So 1147.02, under no circumstances shall the Board of Zoning grant an appeals or variance that allows the use not permissible under the ordinance and the district involved in any uses expressly or by implication prohibited by the terms of the ordinance in said district. So that's one thing we want to change, to have the Board of Zonings to have the authority over that.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I think definitely some of the language of the code should be changed to make it more clear as to what, what can be allowed and what, what can't be.
Yes. That's what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
Well, putting it on our law director's plate.
But in the meantime, does that mean that she should probably apply the Board of Zoning Appeals for this variance at this time? While we're doing this other?
With my interpretation of the code as it is, I, I think she can, yeah.
That, that sounds like a step forward.
If she so desires, she can.
I figured.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't going to say anything, but here we are. Jackie Vanek, 335, on another drive. So I'm the one that brought this home occupancy. Does that need to be changed like on here? Because it's not the home occupancy ordinance, is it? It's the additional structure. Okay, so I don't want this to like halfway through go, oh, it needs referred differently. Okay, so just to make sure that's good. Also, about the commission meeting that we're working on planning, is there anybody that can give me some insight on what I need to have for that? And or how long? Because I was asked to come, but I don't want to come unprepared, so... Okay, sounds good. And then, yeah, I think that was it. I think as long as we can make sure everybody understands like from the outside that it's not the home occupancy that we're talking about. Because home occupancy is allowed. It's the accessory structure. So it's more for people that need a little bit more room to breathe other than their square footage of their home. So just to make that clear. All right, thank you, guys.
Perfect.
Come on down.
Chris Moritz, 226 Plymouth Street. I listened to you go through it. I didn't have it with me to watch you read that through that. I didn't see anything on there for height of sign or obstruction of roadways. Yeah, just six foot square footage, but can it be, you know, three foot off the ground or doesn't matter? That's the only thing I could see on there that, that would be, you know. That's something I think might be, want to be put in there because somebody might put, you know, too close to the road past the house.
Something that we usually try to regulate is keeping it back inside your right of way and area, you know, not, not being out.
Okay, that's just something I didn't catch when you were talking. Okay.
Any more public participation? Meeting adjourned at? Huh?
7:18.
7:18.
Development Committee, March 21st, 2024.
I'd like to call Economic Development's order at 7:19 PM. Members present are Vicki DeShawn, Carolyn Shireman, Christopher Moritz, and myself, Zion Hickman, Chair. Do we have any public participation for economic development? Seeing none, move to the approval of minutes from the March 7th, 2024 Regular Economic Development Committee meeting.
I move to approve the March 7th, 2024 Regular Economic Development Committee meeting minutes.
Second.
I have a first from DeShawn, a second from Shireman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to our very slim open projects list. I have some phone calls to make to other municipalities about JED. And maybe, hopefully, I will have this ready by the next committee. Maybe. With that out of the way, do I have any more public participation? Seeing none, I will adjourn at 7:21 PM.
Finance Committee, March 21st, 2024.
I'm going to call Finance back to order at 7:22 PM. The same members are still present, being James, Me, Christopher, Moritz, Vicky, DeShawn, and myself, myself as the Chair. Uh, is there any public participation?
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. I would like to point out my First Amendment rights of free speech and to digress my government body. Number one, there was public participation after the bed tax. However, we were denied that right. I had several questions as a public resident and as a member of this community to ask some questions about the Besiris Tourism Bureau, Visitors Bureau. Number one, it states in here they had consulting fees of $950. What were those fees for and with whom? Two, it was brought to the attention during the meeting that as of March 21st today, $1,500 the board approved, $1,500 to the Bratwurst Festival. Also, Bratwurst Festival was given money in 2023 and 2021. How come funds are not being given to the car show? Funds are not given to the bike show and other organizations in this community? Why are they the only ones being given money? Two, their grand total that they have, according to what Ms. DeShawn said, with their $14,435.06, they have a grand total of $105,064.05 in their cofferts right now. Where's their budget? This city administration and this city government has to put a yearly budget together. Where is this budget? I think we were railroaded in not being able to ask the Director questions. What are these funds used for? Where are they going? Are they going to be used for employees? This is something the public needs to know. Okay? We should not give any more money to this Visitors and Tourism Bureau until more questions and answers are allowed to take place. Good? We have a pool that we're not even opening, don't even know yet until tomorrow. But why should we give them more money than $105,000? We have a pool to open. We have kids that need something to do. Mr. Myers said in the March 7th meeting, there are other things that kids can do in this community. I like to know what, besides soccer, baseball, or whatever. What are other things these kids can do in this community? That pool is an essential city service to this community. It is not a four-day event. It is a summer event where kids can go, gather, swim, and have fun. All summer long. All right, continuing on. I would like to stand corrected. My letter submitted to Council should have stated it was during the Financial Committee. When Mr. Myers asked Mr., Mr. Gurnick, you asked to speak here, is there where you wanted to speak, is, yes, yeah? Mr. Myers pointed to his paperwork. Mr. Myers is a Festival Director. He's an official. Mr. Myers stated if he was an employee, if he was their employee, that I am a volunteer not paid. The law director has to do research. My letter was to inform our elected official about the ethics laws that could be a problem for some of you. The more I research what I do, I have found out more and more interesting facts and videos that support this matter. One is such that I found today that Mr. Myers, back on May 18th, 2021, when Kurt was the Council President to adopt Resolution 2018-2021, Mr. Myers abstained from the voting on this due to the fact that he was on the Bratwurst Festival at the time, basically a conflict of interest. Currently, we have two, maybe more, don't know, of Council members that might fit into the same situation, which is a conflict of interest under the ethics laws. During this same committee meeting, Kurt asked if he could speak directly to the Festival Committee. Mr. Myers said, Kurt, I will give you a variance on this. Kurt asked the Festival Committee, would they open up their books so that there would be transparency, so people know what's going on? The President stated, I will get with their board on this. During the same committee meeting, same time, same committee meeting, the President of the Festival stated the following. There are policies for meeting with the board. So, what are these policies? So that an open meeting can be done in front of this committee and the general public to ask questions. According to the Ohio Attorney Journal's Office, the Festival in their 2022 filing shows a gross revenue of $131,995.06 with a total asset of $211,947.06. This is public record. So far, the Festival has not filed their statement with the Ohio Attorney Journal's Office yet, and that it is not due until May. And when it comes out, it's public record. That they would have to charge for equipment and hookups to other people, that I understand with this. It might not be fair, but it's their property. Questions, how many nonprofits are actually renting space during the Bratwurst, during the Festival? How does church groups, as the President stated, that rent out their own parking lots or the beer gardens of private groups and organizations, how will they be affected? They're not even in the Bratwurst Festival grounds. They're away from it. So, how are they going to be affected, as the President so spoke? What I believe to be true, that the Festival's own beer garden and the parking lot of FC Bank hurts these other beer gardens and their fundraising efforts. Does Bratwurst Festival Inc. pay any individual for any type of work performed during this event? I would like to know. Another thing, the car show, bike show, First Friday, and parades in downtown, what the heck do they have to do with this? Does the, does, does, what money does the city of Besiris give to them? Can anybody explain how much money we give to these other organizations that have different other events in our downtown area? Yes, some get support from the city. I do agree with that. But in no way is this apples to apples of this Festival to these other groups. The Festival gets way more benefits than any of these other groups. I will be looking into the information that I came across today and feel that this Council and the public should have the facts about this matter. There have been several facts that have been stated on record before this, before Council members that I believe are not true and stretching it. I hope the Bratwurst Festival Inc., the Board of Directors, would be open to a public forum meeting to set the record straight. It should be done as a Finance Committee special meeting, so that any, anyone can ask questions of this board and their financial statements. I have a current copy of their 22 filing that shows what I just said about how much assets and money they have. However, in discovery of this today, that I find out that it has not been done properly. I also found out the minutes of the meeting where Mr. Myers abstained from voting for that ordinance dealing with Bratwurst Festival. I think there should be more transparency in this Council in allowing people to come and ask questions and know where their tax dollars are going to. Thank you.
Any other public participation?
Ken Long, 625 South Spring Street. I'm back up here talking about the pool, now the finance side of this thing. I'm an average finance guy. I'm, I'm not, I'm not the brainchild in the room. But if we have a budget in the city of approximately $55 million, and let's just assume we need a hundred grand for the pool. I can't imagine that there's not at least a hundred line items in the city. And if we peeled out $1,000 out of each one of them, there's a hundred grand. Now, that's, that's pretty simple math, and I have no idea if it'll work and if it's the right funds and all that. But I wanted to throw that out there because, you know, it may be hard to stroke a check for $100,000 out of some fund, but when, if, if money's already been allocated or reallocated compared to what was given, given to the administration at the end of, at the end of the year when the budget was made, then I would, I would assume that there could be some, some pencil whipping done on there and reduce, reduce those hundred line items by $1,000, and all of a sudden the pool's open for the kids. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Long. I will reiterate that last year's Council and Finance Committee, when they put the budget together, did include the pool, and the administration made the difficult decision to, to not utilize those funds at the last time. Now, we're waiting for an update tomorrow. But that's, you know, that's within their, their purview to do that. And, you know, they're just looking out for the, the city's tax dollars. And, you know, it's, it's unfortunate that the pool's one of those things that it, it doesn't make as much money as it costs, like many other things, but some of the other things are more essential services. You know, snowplows don't make any money. They cost us money, but we kind of have to plow the snow.
Right.
I think from the efforts that are to be done privately, as well as, you know, working with the administration, they're doing everything they can to make this happen. And I have full faith that they're going to, you know, if, if that pool doesn't open this year, it's not going to be for lack of trying on anybody's part, whether it be the private citizens or the administration, so.
No, I understand.
And I, I think, you know, I'm, I'm anxious to hear what they had to say after tomorrow's meeting and see where it goes.
I am too. I, I think, I think the whole group, all the people involved in this are, are good people, and we're all trying to do the right thing. I'm just saying, with a $55 million budget, $100,000 picked out, $1,000 apiece, that's, that's pretty simple math. That's just a suggestion. Thank you.
Any other public participation?
Gene, stop me.
Oh, I mean, where do you come up with 55 million? I was just wondering. We don't have 55 million dollars.
It was, it was right here roughly last November when Mr. Weisenhour, was it?
Wireball.
Wireball, wire, wireball. When, when this pool thing came up and it was ugly, and I said, well, what, what's the city budget? And he had no idea. And then the auditor was able to come up with that number off the top of her head.
Yes.
So.
Thank you. I was just.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. It was a shocking number to me when I'm, when I'm, I'm sitting here crying about $100,000.
I, I get it.
But, but I, I, I get the big picture. I'm just, if I don't keep poking the bear, I don't know how it's ever going to get fixed. That's, I'm just screwed.
All right, you're good. I was just wondering about the 55 million.
Carolyn Shireman, 1065 East Bill Avenue, Besiris. Kevin, concerning the Bratwurst Festival, I don't know, that's why I'm asking you. Do you have anything to do with getting the financial reports?
No.
Nothing? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other public participation? All right, you have in front of you the minutes from the March 7th, 2024 Regular Finance Committee meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve it?
Motion by Mr. Moritz, a second by Mrs. DeShawn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion carries. Transfers for water filtration contractual services. Ms. Lewis.
All right, so if you've had a chance to look at it, I have the transfers written where we're taking $45,000 in total, $21,000 from Waterworks Water Filtration Personal Services and $24,000 from Waterworks Water Distribution Personal Services and transferring it to Waterworks Water Filtration Contractual Services. Like I said, totaling an amount of $45,000. That is just because Chad needs some money for his outside contractors. Chad Slagle, sorry.
Do you want me to address this one first, or do you want to do them all together?
If you want to, since it's a transfer.
Okay. So, for this transfer, I need a motion for emergency legislation that authorizes the auditor to move $21,000 out of Fund 701, Line 7522, Item 21 Personal Services, as well as $24,000 out of the same fund, and move it both to Fund 701, Line 7522 Water Filtration, Line 23 Contractual Services.
I make a motion for those transfers.
I have a first by Mr. Moritz and a second by Mr. Me. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? That motion passes. Ms. Lewis.
Okay, on to appropriations. So, we are in talks of creating a position for an engineer tech and how that is written in the bill. It is that 10% of it should be paid out of General Fund. But because it wasn't a position while we were making the budget, there's no money in those lines. So, we have to appropriate $9,450 into 101 Program 7, the General Fund, into Engineering and Development Personal Services. And then for the second appropriation, this is contractual services for water distribution. And a little explanation of this, because we don't have a lot of money to appropriate in the water fund. So, this was actually a previous year's purchase order that we closed. It was an encumbered balance, and it, we just have to, it kind of falls off the books in a way. It doesn't go back into a detailed trial balance or on the line. So, I have to, like, notify the county that that previous encumbrance is closed, and then we can reappropriate that money into the budget. So, we will be appropriating into Waterworks Fund, Water Distribution Contractual Services, $105,000.
All right, so we are seeking a motion for emergency legislation authorizing these two appropriations, one into Fund 101, Line 7756, Item 21 Personal Services, in the amount of $9,450. The second being into Fund 701, Line 7525, Item 23 Contractual Services, in the amount of $105,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Me, second by Mr. Moritz. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? That motion carries. All right, at this time, before we start open projects, I am going to excuse myself from the remainder of this committee, because the item on the open projects that Mrs. DeShawn wishes to bring up involves the Bratwurst Festival. So, Mr. Me, this is your committee for the remainder of the evening.
Kevin, you want to approach it, please?
I would like to, thank you. Kevin Myers, Director of the Besiris Bratwurst Festival, 330 South Sandusky Avenue. I'm standing on this side of the podium, receiving by the legal opinion of the law director. So, I feel that by not participating as a member of this committee in these discussions, it has now become my responsibility and my duty as the Director of the Festival to stand here to educate you on the implications of your desire to change the Fest-, or to charge the Festival for the services that they are using from the city of Besires. Before I get to what those services exactly are, let me tell you a little bit about the services that the Festival provides to our community. We provide the electric service, including the physical hookup, as well as paying the AEP bills for the bike show, the car show, and First Fridays. Our parade committee offers support and equipment to the Santa Parade. We provide the concrete barriers for the bike show. All of this at zero cost. If we are made to compensate the city, this will not continue to be the case. We also started several years ago, charging the local nonprofits only $100 for their 30-foot space during the Festival. This is a total loss of approximately $3,780 in revenue to the Festival. Clubs like the Besiris Band Boosters, the Colonel Crawford Lions Club, the Knights of Columbus, Winford Athletic Boosters, and the Colonel Crawford Corvette Raffle will have to give up approximately $900 each of their profits to cover their space to rent at the Festival. The services that we receive from the city include street closure, trash pickup, police, fire, and EMS. Trash pickup the last several years has included dumpsters being placed adjacent to the Festival, and our volunteers transport the trash twice a day to those dumpsters. On Friday and Saturday mornings, the garbage truck comes through, emptying the barrels. Saturday, we only have a driver to cut down an overtime and utilize Festival volunteers to actually dump the barrels. Police help with the parade lineup and patrols during the day while we. Police help with the parade lineup and patrols during the day, while we hire out private security overnight. For helps with inspect, or Fire Department helps with inspecting the booths for fire code violations, and EMS covers the eating contests. I do not have a cost yet for actual costs incurred for the Street Department, trash pickup, or the Police Department, but the Fire Chief has already quoted to me, saying that about $1,000 is all we are using of his staff's additional time for these services. I will note that a majority of the additional police calls during the festival happen in the evenings at the local liquor establishments, and are not directly related to the festival's operations. I will also add that when you drive through town on Sunday morning, it's as if the festival never happened. Can the same be said for other events? The trash lays on city curbs until Monday morning after many of these other events. We do provide two golf carts for the Police Department to use, as well as one EMS cart for the Fire Department, at no additional cost. This will also not be able to be continued. Should the festival have to pay the city for these services, we'll have to adjust our budget to increase revenue and decrease our expenses, taking away other attractions and entertainment. This further only hurts the community and those who travel to it for this event. But what if the expense is too much for the budget? What if the festival ceased to exist because of this? What about all of the 4-H clubs, ball teams, et cetera, that sell parking in local business parking lots, cutting into those groups' funding? What about the local fraternal organizations, beer gardens, that would cease to exist? They also count on the revenues to support their causes. What about the additional bed tax generated during the festival? The city does keep 50% of that in their general fund. This, too, would go away. If the city chooses to charge the festival for services provided, which at the time I served as President of the Ohio Festivals and Events Association, we had about 80 member festivals, only two of the cities charged their festivals anything. I fully expect to see any and every organization that does utilize city services to be charged for those services. That would include the bike show, the car show, First Fridays, Music at the Mural, the Santa Parade, Memorial Day Parade, Suicide Prevention Walk, and Funeral Home Escorts. Now, do I think any of these should be charged? Absolutely not. But if you're gonna single out the Bratwurst Festival, you'd better be fair across the board. In closing, I merely want to educate you that the festival brings in a lot of revenue to our city. We should all continue to work together, not against one another. I believe the few thousand dollars that we're really talking about here will snowball exponentially into losses to the other organizations that they can't and should not be asked to absorb. The current agreement that is in place works for everyone and should be left alone. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, where do I want to start? The first comment by Mr. Myers on the police expenses. I have this broke down, and I got this information from Mr. White, who made a public records request back on, I believe it was September the 18th, '23, and got the information from the auditor's office. While I do not have it broke down as police is this much, and streets are this much, I will say that you had indicated that, was it the police chief that felt, we're like, what, $1,000?
Fire chief.
Or fire, oh, the fire chief. Fire chief, excuse me. Well, we'll take a look here at the fire chief. And that would be a very fair statement. There were three, well, there were four fire individuals, one for 429, another for 480, another for 465, and another one that had 12 hours that I couldn't figure out how to compute, because it was a comp time matter. I do not want to totally, my personal opinion, I don't want to totally not support the Bratwurst Festival, but in 2023, based on the paperwork that I was given, we expended $16,760.22 for fire, police, cleanup. That does not include, however, the city's contribution to the employees' pension fund. I know there was a couple of years ago where that was brought up, and that was like about a $7,000 some odd dollar figure, and if you would add that to the 16, I mean, you know, there's 23.
So, let's see.
Pardon?
The question I have was, there's gonna be police on duty at all times, there's gonna be firemen on duty at all times. Was that subtracted? This was just an addition because of the Bratwurst Festival?
Yes. The paperwork that Mr. White obtained, and again, supplied me with copies, it's broke down. I mean, let me find my papers here, just give me a second, if you will. Yes, it's broke down as to the day, the person, and it shows that it's for the festival. Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at a page sheet, and it was highlighted, and, yeah.
So, there was six firemen on duty, then there was three extra ones on duty, or EMS fire, for the Bratwurst Festival, and seven comp hours, right?
Well, I'm saying that on this sheet that breaks down, there were three, one, two, three, four firemen.
Four firemen.
That worked during the Bratwurst Festival, and their hours were charged to the festival, if you will. I mean, it's to keep track, to give, you know, the city an idea of what they are expending.
Can I, I think if I'm remembering what I gave Mr. White, this is a while ago, but I'm, I believe that our office does not keep track of the specific departments' overtime for the Bratwurst Festival, but the department heads do.
Right, yes.
So, what I provided Mr. White, I believe, was the list that department heads gave me with the amount of overtime hours worked, and then I provided Mr. White our payroll register with the column highlighted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a question, and how many of those police calls and things are kept separate for bar calls and things like that, or is that just because it's during the festival?
All it says is "festival."
See, that you, most of the calls for the Police Department are from the bars at night, it doesn't have to do with the festival. It's the bar.
I mean, the festival is like the parades, and the carnival games, and the food, and the entertainment. I've never seen them. While the police do help with the parade, I agree with that.
Well, I remember, I'm not sure if it was two years ago, watching the Bratwurst Festival Queen Pageant, and watching, I believe there were five police officers standing there at the pageant the whole time, and it's like...
Were they expecting something?
Yeah, I think there was an issue. Yeah, but, you know.
Mr. White.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have my documents, because I have it all broke down.
Oh.
Okay, and it, but it also, that money includes the comp time.
Right, comp time.
Okay, includes comp time from city employees. Now, this does not include the list of employees that work during normal business hours. This figures does not, and Kaylee knows that for a fact, because I asked her, and she has no record of that, and neither does anybody in the respective departments, okay? This was strictly all overtime to the city of Bussiris, okay, for extra people, okay? And it didn't, or after-hours overtime. Some people got comp time, some people took payment, okay? So, it's accumulated of all that extra time after, extra people or after-hours, including, I think Jeff Dunn got like seven hours of overtime?
Correct.
Okay, so he got seven hours overtime to supervise the cleanup crews downtown.
That was money well spent.
I, no, I'm not saying, it's not, I'm just saying.
Sorry, that was.
But what I'm saying is, this was accumulation of all the overtime, all the comp time, because city employees, after regular business hours, get one and a half times the rate of pay for comp time, okay? So, they get, for every hour worked, they get 1.5 hours of comp time. So, you have to take that into consideration, times what they make per hour. It's basically the same thing, overtime, but they get it in comp time hours.
I think we have to look at a lot of things on how many calls they had, how many EMS calls were had, how many police calls were had, you know, actually, how many are we funding it sufficient enough?
This was extra and above what is normally, you know, during normal business hours, like the Fire Department, they had whatever, how many guys stationed that day. This was the extra people that they had brought in, and I broke it down to what the fire got, what the police got, and what, but I broke it down just to the Services Department. And I have that right, I have that at home, and I didn't know.
Did you email that to him?
Sure, I could send that to you.
Perfect.
Because that's all it was, was accumulated of just festival hours only. It didn't include people from the city garage working during Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday during their normal business hours, that were downtown working on things, or helping set up this or that. That didn't include all of that. But the other thing you have to look at, too, is who's paying the electric bill during the festival?
The Bratwurst Festival pays a great deal.
He just said it.
Okay, and then who pays the water bill? The city does. City gives them free water, okay? So, the thing is, is that you have to look at this as just how it is. How much does it cost the city that we're giving out in services versus we're not giving anybody else the same type? And I think Mr. Myers says it has to be fair and equal among everybody. I think he said that in the first meeting, in the first committee meeting tonight, that everything should be fair and equal, okay?
Mr. Deschawn.
Mr. Heinlein stated back at the February 20th council meeting, he says one thing to be considered would be the bed tax, and I'm quoting him. "If the festival ended up paying the city, and this subsequently results in the festival closing down due to lack of funds, the number would definitely be cut in half, or possibly more, because the hotels are getting filled for the people coming in for the festival." Well, I got a breakdown of the 2023 bed tax revenue. The first quarter, which would be your January, February, March, that's $13,904.09, which I really don't even think we should look at that. I think we need to look at April, May, and June, which is $17,185.52. Then you come to your third quarter, which are the months of July, August, and September, that's a figure of $16,164.83, so it even is down a little, even though that's the Bratwurst Festival time. Then if you look at the fourth quarter of October, November, and December, it's $12,703.28. In other words, I do not believe that Mr. Heinlein's statement that if the festival closes down, that the bed tax would be cut in half or possibly more, which again, that's quoting him, these figures don't show that. I mean, $59,000, almost $60,000 in bed tax, I think if I work it out, we would maybe lose like $3,000 in bed tax.
My comments didn't say any numbers.
Yeah.
Why is it up in, you know, in the springtime?
Everybody's coming home for Mother's Day.
Well, let's not get rid of that.
Right. Let that on the record, not getting rid of Mother's Day.
Okay.
Mr. Me, may I ask a question of the administration?
Absolutely.
Are we still planning on bringing in any extra police or fire for the Eclipse event, as was initially discussed?
Police, we are.
Okay, so we're bringing in extra staff for another tourist event. This is the point I'm trying to make. We should probably send a bill to the sun.
You got it, you got anything?
Also, on the, as far as police runs and the fire runs do, it's because of not only what Aaron was saying with the bars and the night issues, it's also population coming into town. I mean, it probably almost doubles during the Bratwurst Festival while they're here. People stay at people's houses, coming home for the holidays, or for the Bratwurst Festival, everybody comes over for the Bratwurst Festival, maybe more than, in the springtime even.
I don't know. You know how many people, question for the, you know how many people we have come in for the Bratwurst Festival? Rough number?
I have no idea.
I have no idea.
Do you?
The state did some figures for us several years ago.
Yeah.
I will. The state did some figuring, and what they did with, they took an aerial shot and tried to count the number of people. It's really hard, even when you don't have an attendance gate, but their estimate over the three-day period was approximately 100,000 people. Now, how many of them are coming from out of town? How many of them are unique visitors? I mean, if Brian goes up there three days in a row, he counted as one or three, I mean, I don't know what went in that math formula, I just know that's what the stadium may give us, that number of approximately 100,000, and that's what we use in all of our literature and publications. That's why it's in that, why the police cost and the Fire Department cost and everything else we go up to, is because of all the extra traffic of people in town. It has to be part of the equation when we're doing all this, too.
I know the comment that... Or the question, if city services are gonna be charged to, that's, well, I guess Mr. Heinlein said, he questioned, if they are made to pay for city services, will this be the standard practice for car show, bike show, and what have you? And like, he stated, if the city doesn't fund, then they're not gonna be able to do their volunteer donating of their equipment and their labor free of charge, they're gonna have to start charging. I don't know where I'm going here with this. I mean, it's like, we have to look at our money situation, and unfortunately, you know, I mean, it's not as bad as what, you know, we thought, but hey, we have to be working on it to make sure that we don't get to the point of, that it becomes bad. So, it's like, we are losing revenue, and because we're losing revenue, we're having to look at other areas that we're having to pull back funds. And basically, the Bratwurst Festival is saying the same thing. Well, if you pull back funds from us, then you know what, people, we're pulling funds back from you.
But, let's see, we got all these people going into our restaurants, we got all these people going into our bars, you know, you don't go up to beer gardens and buy one beer, I don't care who you are. If you're going into a beer garden, you're gonna buy a couple of them, you know?
I guess what I was hoping, and again, I'm one person, I mean, you know, this is a committee, is that we would all put some skin in the game here, or whatever the saying is. I mean, we're working with the Fire Department. You know, they're helping to do their thing, so, okay, maybe the Bratwurst Festival could help do a little. I mean, I'm gonna sit here and say it, and I spoke with someone, you know, the other evening, we are probably gonna have to look at the out-of-town worker credit. I had an individual call me and ask me about that, because he thought it was on the table now, and like I explained to him, as far as I know, it's not on our agenda, but when the time comes that it is on the agenda, I want people to know well in advance, I know I'm getting off topic here, but well in advance that, hey, we're gonna have this meeting to discuss this. I don't want them to be blindsided, and we have a meeting, and we're talking about out-of-town worker credit, so...
I just want you to know, I'm putting skin in the game. I volunteered for the Bratwurst Festival this year, so.
Oh.
You want skin in the game.
You're gonna get your hands dirty, as we were told to do.
I'm not trying to argue that, I'm really trying to educate, because I think there's a lot of misconceptions about things. When you made a comment about it's time for the festival to have some skin in the game, if you could see the amount of change that we've done working with the city over the last five to six years, I remember as a kid, that garbage truck drove down through town two times a day, every day. I remember as a kid walking, having to get out of the way of the big, the big white garbage truck, right? That doesn't happen anymore. Why? Because our people are doing that. And then on the Saturday morning, we were paying one guy overtime to bring the truck through. We, Larry West and I, amongst other people, were out there dumping the barrels of trash. You know, we're doing everything we can to try to cut back... You know, we're doing everything we can to try to cut back. We're working with the fire department to schedule the eating contest, because we have to have a paramedic at each eating contest, the events don't be choked. We're working on scheduling them in a closer time block, so that we're not paying somebody all day long to do the, we're putting them closer. So we are doing everything that we can to try to cut back on the expenses. I think that needs to be noted.
Hi, my name is Raven Storm Sherrack. I'm the Bucyrus Bratwurst Festival Queen, and I live at 1485 Oak Ridge Drive, Bucyrus, Ohio. I can say as the queen that I get so many scholarships, and so do my girls, throughout the festival, just because they support us that much. They also make sure that I myself get to travel, and, and my court, we all get to travel. And it's honestly the best experience that any girl could ask for. And I have never missed a Bratwurst Festival. I'm born in July, and I was there at my first one, not August, when I was born, and I've never missed one. And it is the best thing that Bucyrus has to offer. And I, I know that people from all over the state, all over the country, come to Bucyrus once a year, just for the Bucyrus Bratwurst Festival. My sister, when she lived out in Spain, came back for the Bratwurst Festival, because she also has never missed one. As the queen, I get the chances to represent my community, and we do as much community service as we possibly can. We've already done community service this year to help out the Humane Society, and we've donated to Ronald McDonald House. And we've overall just tried to represent the city as best as we can, which is, I know is exactly what you guys do too. So, the Bratwurst Festival is honestly the thing that gets us out there the most. And that's what helps us overall as a city to stay where we are. And it's absolutely phenomenal. It is how we bring people in, it is how we thrive as a community, it is how we stick together as a community, because it brings everybody together to create this festival. Thank you.
So are you thinking, Kevin, Aaron, that the $16,000, if it was split in half, that that would just make your Bratwurst Festival die? And go away?
No, I think, first and foremost, when, when I spoke with the previous administration a couple of years ago about this, when they enacted the whole thing of giving the nonprofits the reduced spacing and all that, I thought that was a great plan. As this has started to come up over the last couple of years, I made the suggestion that, you know, let's figure out what the street costs are. Because I truly believe that we don't have that much police department cost that's attributed to what's going on during the festival. Like, it was stated, a lot of it's things going on subsequent to the festival, just happens to be during the festival, but not at the festival. I really believe that the costs of the street crew coming in, I think we should pay those. I really do. And I made that suggestion, and the previous administration says, no, I think the plan we have in place works. So, they didn't want to do anything about it. Times were probably a little better financially for the city, you know, at that time. I get it. I think part of it is, I want to hear a fair number. That's why I spoke with the fire chief, I haven't had a chance to speak with, with the street people, or anybody else, to get those exact numbers of what are we truly costing? Because, to be honest, yeah, what are we truly costing? But then I also look at all the things I mentioned that we're bringing back to the table on the other side of things. I think that's where the discussion needs to go.
So what figures do you think that you're going to get from them that we haven't already?
You just, I didn't have those until I just heard them tonight. You know, I, you know, again, the, the street crew that's picking up the trash on Friday morning, okay, they're already working, I get it. Okay, so they could be out doing something else. But, they're also, you know, again, when I mentioned all the other events that happened in town on the weekends, they got to drive down through town on Monday morning to pick up all the trash. Nobody's being charged for that extra. They're doing that during their normal workday. That's why the trash is laying there until Saturday, as to not create overtime. I'm not upset about that. It's a matter of being fair on both sides of it, from the city's standpoint and the festival's standpoint. But your question, are you saying you're coming up with a total of $8,000 is your estimate? Here, here's the thing, and, and I don't remember the exact numbers, but back, you know, before I was involved, when I look back and have people that are older than me, would tell things.
Thanks, Kevin.
He is. We were, we were paying upwards of $20,000 at that time.
2006, 20,000, 2007, 12,500, 2008, 16,000, 2009, there was no festival, because it was out, or the festival was out at the fairgrounds. 2010, 11,500, 2011, 11,700 plus 27, 50, 2012, 18,500, 2013, 17,500, 2014, 16,000, 2015, 16,500, and then from '16 on to the current time, there was no charge made.
I'm also going to ask a question that, I mentioned that when we, when I was the president of the OFEA, we asked the festivals at that time, when this was being discussed, at that time, 78 of the 80 festivals in our organization, their cities weren't charged with anything. I mean, I think those 78 cities were seeing the value of what a town's pride festival brings to the community. We have people coming to town that are spending money, bed tax money, income, or not income tax money, but sales tax money, you know, things like that is all bringing to the community. So, that's, that's what I'm standing on. Do I think that there could be a discussion on fair on both ends? Absolutely. I don't think we're asking to not pay a dime. I think what we're asking is to not make it so atrocious as it was in the past, where we, we just can't do that with our budget.
And that's what I'm personally asking for. I mean, especially if there's going to come a time that we're going to be looking at our out-of-town workers for, you know, a possible reduction on their out-of-town tax credit. I mean, it's like, how can I look at them and say, we're going to do this, but by the same token, we're going to go ahead and, you know, pay for, I guess I, maybe I'm being naive, I was just hoping that I could get different people to just give a little.
Yeah. And another thing that I found interesting, I don't know if this matters or not, but prior, when we were paying those fees, it was brought to my attention that the city never budgeted for those expenses. And then, when we stopped paying those fees in '16, it was then that overtime was budgeted into the payroll at that time. I don't know if that mattered, I mean, it's still an expense. But I think that was one of the reasons, they just never budgeted, and they said, well, we're going to bill you for it instead. So, that's some of the history.
Right, yes, I, yeah, I know that, yeah, yeah. Yeah, Jim's chair. Go down.
Carolyn Shireman. I'm going to go in a different direction here. I think that the city is trying to do everything they can to come to some kind of agreement, solution, under the circumstances that we are in. And I was sitting there thinking, this could all help be solved if the Bratwurst Festival would produce some numbers. With that being said, you know, I have people in my areas that are stating that the Bratwurst Festival, it's their event, should be paying for the safety forces and the trash. Also, I'm thinking, once financial records are produced to council and the city concerning the Bratwurst Festival, why can't the city just do a flat rate, $8,000 sponsorship to the Bratwurst Just flat rate, sponsor them with $8,000.
So you're talking about services, correct?
I'm talking about the Bratwurst Festival itself, they can use the $8,000 in however, whatever they pay for it. That's a sponsorship from the city, because it's like if the Brat, if the city doesn't do anything, the city looks crappy.
Then, then you're saying they can pay for all their police and EMS and all that.
Exactly. Out of that, out of the $8,000. They will have to learn to either taper down, get more sponsors, or, or something. It isn't, it isn't on the city's back. You know, we don't really have to do anything. But, to work with the city, the Bratwurst Festival should be producing the financial records that we're asking for, so we can see some kind of numbers. I can come up here and give you, for instance, I don't know how to say this, can I bring in the Positive Seekers? I can? The Positive Seekers, and can I, I can say that's, an organization, right?
Legal question.
Okay. The Positive Seekers, we go on by what sponsorship that we get, you know? And we have to accustom ourselves to the money that we have that we get from sponsorship, you know, which is a whole heck of a lot less than what this is all about. So, I can't go do the Positive Seekers. When we do events, like we did the Red, White, and Blues, it was out at Old Miller Park, the only thing we charged was $25 for the vendors to set up. That was it. And then whatever sponsors the, the businesses give us, that's monies that we use for the bands and everything else that we did. Well, I patter, I think the Bratwurst Festival should be patterned after that, as, when it comes to money, you know? And then we got to where we didn't get no sponsorship, and we still function, not like we did, you know, but we're still out there kicking and grinding, and I, I don't, if the Bratwurst Festival isn't getting the sponsorship from the city that they think they should get, then I suggest to them that they go out there and hit the curve and get some more sponsors. Why does it have to be the city? Go to the factory, go to the businesses, go to, go, go elsewhere. Why is it, I say, just, if it was up to me, you'd get $8,000 straight, divide it up how you want to do it, and get off the city's back. One should give the financial records that we're asking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Long, 625 Spring Street. I'll try to be brief, because we've got plenty of comments on this. First of all, I'd like to commend Mr. Myers, he did a great job of presenting, presenting his case. You know, from all the benefits, you know, for the other, the other street fairs we have, or day-long events, all that, and his, his comment about, you know, his is a three-day event, these are all 10-hour, one-day, whatever events, the other events, and so, it is a different animal, you know, and, and that, I go both ways, okay, on that. I do think, I think there's a huge value to what the Bratwurst Festival brings to the community, and, so it, it, I'm losing my thought here, sorry, I'm sorry. But, I think there's a lot, there's a lot of draw that the city doesn't see financially that day. You know, people coming in and out of town, like I said, if we have 100,000 people, bring it, you know, they're coming in here, somebody's spent some money someplace. And so, it may not directly affect the city, but there's, there's a long, there's a long-term gain for that. And I'm glad you brought, I'm glad, Mrs. San, you brought, you know, what, what the actual cost was to the city, you know, if it's 16 grand, at least now we have a number to work with. You know, whether it's good, bad, different, half, half of it, whatever amount of it, that's good too. And I do, I do think overall, I think there's a lot more good that the Bratwurst Festival does for all these different organizations, including the people that are putting on these other shows, if they are, they're not nickel and diming them to death. You know, there it is. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I respond to Mr. Long?
I didn't know what that was. Scared me.
It's a, I think it's a cap off the microphone.
I, I would like to address you, please. First off, it doesn't matter if it's a six-hour event or a three-day event. When you do a six-hour, big, open-to-the-public event, and you get five bands, and you pay each of those five bands, okay? You have to purchase the insurance, you have to purchase the insurance that covers the food and the people eat. I can put on a Red, White, and Blues in six hours, and it can cost me $16,000 for the six hours. And it does include everybody in town. Anybody that has an organization, we let them set up for $25, whatever money, whatever they do, sell, that money is theirs. We don't get a percent of it. We had a dump tank, we paid for the dump tank, we had Chief Kepke on the dump tank, the people paid to dunk him, and all of that money went to the police department for what they were funding. So it doesn't matter if it's a three-day fair or a six-hour event, it still costs a lot of money that you don't understand. Thank you.
Just to clarify my position, when I'm comparing the Bratwurst Festival to a car show, a bike show, things like that, there isn't a lot of dollars out, and that's what I'm comparing to. And, you know, as far as Carolyn's event, I'm not directly involved in that or aware of it, so I didn't throw that into the heap. But, I'm, the ones that have been mentioned are all these, the street events, there, you know, you know, the cruising with the cops and, you know, things like that. And I think, I think my comments were fair, based on, on those kind of events that have been brought up.
My event was three years in a row.
I want to do some more research on it, because I want to know how many calls, police calls were made that involved, you know, and not just the beer gardens, which, the beer gardens are the bars, they're, they're the VFWs and the Elks, and they pay for the bands, and they pay for their insurance. I want to find out the incidences, not necessarily there, but the incidences that we needed police department, and we needed EMS for the festival. So, Mr. Gerner?
I wanted to reiterate some of the stuff Kevin brought up, was they pay for the electricity for that event. And that also, oh geez, I just lost my thought.
That's easy.
Yeah, I know. I had this all head planted in my head. Also, they provide the electricity and the, the circuit boards, all, all the, all electrical stuff that it takes to put these other events on, they give that free of charge, and that costs money to redo all that if they have to redo it. They do it at their cost, for all that stuff.
There's that well over a quarter million dollars invested in the electric system.
And, they, they provide that for all of that stuff. That's a big cost, and I know how much it, it costs to maintain all that stuff, and let alone upgrade it. So that's another thing we got to think about too.
May I ask, is, you know, like, the tourism bureau, where we're asking, you know, them to do their quarterly reports, is there a reason why, when we've asked a couple times, for like, you know, your financials, you're not providing them?
The only answer I can give is that the board is, has just switched attorneys, and both attorneys have told them not to, and I don't know why. And I made the comment before, I'll sit down with anybody and go over my budget with you. I have no problem doing that. I've never been asked.
Thanks, Kevin. Can I say something, please?
To us.
Yeah. I believe that I just asked Kevin if he had anything to do with the financial reports.
That's correct. The financial reports.
And, excuse me, I'm talking, you're interrupting.
That's okay, because I'm going to answer your, your body.
Well, then wait till your turn, please. Thank you. So my question is this. If he can just say what he said about the financial stuff and numbers, then why can't he get the financial reports? Or why is he even talking about the financial reports and that, that you just questioned, if he sat there and said he has nothing to do with them? So, is he in or is he out? Can he give us the figures, or do we just go by what he says? That, that's, that, that I didn't understand when he just said that.
I was asked about financial reports which are done through our treasurer and Ms. McMiller. I have a budget that is given to me by the board of directors. That's all that I have. I do not have anything to do with our financial reports. I have our budget that is handed to me by the board of directors, and that's all that I can discuss. I cannot discuss our financial reports because I don't have anything to do with them.
Thank you.
But we could probably get to a point where Mr. Me and Ms. DeShawn sit down with Mr. Heinlein or the attorney for the Bratwurst Festival and discuss those numbers. If you guys would like, I'll reach out to whomever their attorney is and schedule this, so that we can stop talking about these numbers and actually look at them. I mean, they exist, it's not hard to do.
Yeah, that's fine.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure, come on up. Be nice.
Thank, I will promise, I'm trying.
Thank you.
Carolyn Shireman, I have a suggestion. Since it's the taxpayers' money that will be going for the Bratwurst Festival from the city, correct? Why don't you guys open a thing and invite the citizens of Ucires up here to tell you what they think they should do? Because I've had lots of citizens tell me that it's their event, they should pay for it. So I say, open up a, open thing for the city.
Call them.
Huh?
Just have them call me.
No.
I have gotten no calls.
Open a meeting, open a city council.
Call your council.
They've talked to me.
Call your council members.
We're all open, we're all in here, calling up if they want to.
Well, you should make a specified meeting for that alone, while we wait for the financial rate papers.
I'd like to do some more research, and maybe that's an option.
Let's bear in what we got.
Okay. Because I want to do some more research on it.
Thank you.
Then we'll, we'll go with Mr. Gurner.
Thank you.
And just keeping in mind that, you know, we have the time, that we need to let the festival know one year in advance if any changes are going to be made to the permanent agreement.
So this doesn't affect this year, this year's set.
Oh, no, this year, they, yeah, we're, the city's paid for everything, yes. Yeah. But we need to give them, prior to this year's Bratwurst Festival...
Correct.
...notice if there's going to be any change done.
We'll keep it on the open projects list and... Okay?
Yeah, like I say, I mean, don't take it personal. I'm just, we're going to be going to other avenues and saying, hey, we're going to have to take a little and...
Yeah, which I offered already, so I'm not saying we want that much.
We may not want that much yet.
Also, I wanted to also make a statement, too, that we can also still do a levy option also.
Pardon?
Levy option also, not just trying to take from the out-of-town workers, that...
You're talking about a mill on property tax?
Yes. Wouldn't be that much. The other quarter we should have put on, on, yeah, we should have put on that already anyway.
Should have been, but...
Didn't, yeah.
To do that, if I'm not mistaken, it's going to be two years down the road before we see anything from it, correct?
Property tax, yes.
Property tax?
But it's still something. We got to open up all the options, even though if it's long, long-term, you know, long down the road, it's still got to be an option we got to do.
I agree.
And that's something that we would have to have on the ballot? What's the timeframe?
We can't have it on this year's.
Yeah, you have to August of this year to put it on...
Put it on the ballot, yeah.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Till August.
So that comes back to Kylie. We need a projection of how much... Would you call that a projection of the next three years? So that way we're not overcharging anybody or...
Wouldn't the pool be open?
Huh?
Wouldn't the pool be open?
Pool first, right?
Pool first.
Kids come first. Right? Any more public participation?
Did you... Yeah, open projects?
Any more open projects?
There you go.
Yeah, I think we can, there's quite a few we can take off.
Yeah, there is.
The creation of the local fiscal recovery, we passed legislation, legislation was passed July 5th of '23 for that. The appropriations to the local fiscal recovery special revenue fund, same thing, legislation was passed on July 5th, '23. Next page, reductions to the budget, ordinance was passed this year.
I had that one on my list.
Pardon?
I had that one on my list, too.
Transfers regarding the waterworks fund, that ordinance also was passed, or an ordinance was passed this year.
Could I just really quickly interrupt you?
Sure.
It's always been in the past, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, whenever legislation is passed, it automatically gets taken off by the clerk's office. And I don't know if that was ever actually conveyed on when you took, took your job.
I didn't know.
Yeah, that's how it always was in the past, was whenever there was legislation, it automatically came off.
Well then, why were these things...
I doubt it. That's why I'm bringing it up, to save you from reading through all of them.
Well, no, but I'm saying it was never done.
We had a run on clerk of councils, though.
Yeah, we've had a lot of clerks recently, yeah. So, I guess I'm asking, is that something we can do that, whenever we pass legislation, just make a note on it?
So Miranda, you got a new job?
I mean, didn't need to stop anybody. Actually, less a job, just pick them up.
I won't read anymore, we'll let you do it, Miranda.
We're done with open projects?
Yeah.
Any more public participation? Who are you?
Greg White, 1125 Hill Crest Road. I would like to have the finance committee look at the possibility of suspending the Visitors Bureau and Tourism Bureau money, and because of the bed tax, and that they got over $105,000 in their kitty, and we didn't see no budget. Going on what Mr. Long said, I think that bed tax should be used towards funding the pool. According to Mrs. DeShawn's figures, I roughly think the first quarter and second quarter would be over $30,000, okay? That is pretty close to the $50,000 or whatever it needs to be.
By legislation...
By the state of Ohio, higher vice code.
Yeah.
It has to go there.
It has to go to the tourism-related expense.
Well, then I think we ought to suspend it and then...
We actually, we can't, okay, we have to actually give 50% of it to any tourism-related expense, we can't hold it.
And when they got over $105,000 in their kitty right now, we're going to give them...
We're going to get a lot of tourism this year.
I bet we better. And I'm telling you what, there better be some, some Tourism Bureau for the bike show and cars.
Do you have an, a tourism-related expense that you suggest that we could look at, though? And that's a serious question.
Well, yeah, there's, I can come up, I'll come up with some ideas for you guys for the next...
That would be a good, yeah, because it doesn't, I mean, they're the ones that are doing the majority of the work. I see where you're going with it.
Yeah, I mean, if you're going to give the one, you're going to give it all.
Well, that's not how it works either. We, we as a...
To me, it should be, well, you said it earlier in the first committee, I mean, it should be fair and equal among everybody.
I understand. The higher vice code says that we have to give at least 50% to a tourism-related business.
I know, but then we should specify that this money needs to be done to other groups, not just one. According to our records, it's only been one, one group has got money over the years. Nobody else has got any money. So, that brings in people from out of town, too, from the car show, Marion, I know people come from Norwalk, people come from all over. I'm sure I can get ahold of the police department downstairs, Captain Walker, I can, I can find out how many people come from out of town, they bring their cars or their bikes up here for the explorer group and stuff like that. I'm sure we can find out where all these people come from. That's bringing in tourism into this town. It's bringing taxes in, it's bringing possibly bed tax.
Roughly about 700 cars...
Yeah.
Come in.
So, for a one-day thing. So, to me, as Mr. Myers stated in the first committee, I mean, it should be fair and equal among everybody, not just certain ones.
And to your point, when I met with Casey Grau, that was one of the questions I did pose, and they are going to look at, and so that's why I'm asking you for a list of things like that, they're going to look at other ways that they can divvy some of that money back out to help other groups that are bringing people into town.
Well, that's fine, but then I still want, earlier when I read my thing, I still want, want answers.
I would suggest go and, and schedule a meeting with her.
To interest to that, because I think that's important to the community, how or, what their budget is. To me, this committee should know what their budget is. This, this, our government here has to do yearly budget. Why aren't they doing the yearly budget? And giving that to council on how our tax dollars are spent, because it is tax dollars money, right?
Right.
Okay.
I agree.
So, it should be that they should have a budget, and where this money's going to, who it's being paid out to, what consulting fees are being paid to whom, is the money going for employees, paying for their services, or what is being paid for? Every nickel, diamond, penny. Thank you.
Any more public participation? Sure? All right. We'll adjourn at 8:32.